Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting, April 10th, 2024. And we have some special, oh, sorry. Rule call, please.
Wyman.
Here.
Carlin.
Here.
Dewitt.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Carnes.
Here.
Selajie.
Wright.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful. And we have some special guests here tonight to help us, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies, if you would like to stand right underneath the flag and lead us, that would be fantastic. And then if you could stay up there, I have a certificate after. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
And help me get this right. Thank you very, very much for bringing us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We always love to have students come. Thank you very much. And here's a certificate of our appreciation. Thank you very much.
And welcome Principal Scott Johonik from Oaklawn Elementary School.
Point of order. I'd like to note that we are in compliance with the open meeting law notification.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have brought with me Brooke Lepert, who is a second grade teacher at Oaklawn Elementary School, working on her administration certification and has been involved both at Oaklawn and throughout the district doing some wonderful things. And so I thank her for coming to join me this evening to share some wonderful things that have been happening at Oaklawn Elementary this school year. So classroom teachers, special education teachers have been co-planning to find unique ways to meet the needs of all learners in their least restrictive environment. On fall to mid-year literacy data has shown that Oaklawn students are continuing to close gaps. Specifically, we had 95 students in just that fall to mid-year that rose at least one grade level in their literacy scores.
We've done a couple of new things at Oaklawn this year to engage students in literacy. Last Thursday, April 4th, Oaklawn kicked off our One School, One Book Event. This is our first time trying that event. It provides a shared reading experience to all students and families that builds community, empathy, and literacy skills. We chose the book Malala, which provides mirrors, windows, and doors for our diverse population of families. We'll be culminating that event with a literacy family night on April 22nd. Another new thing we tried this year was the Iditarod Reading Challenge for our students, which is based on the Iditarod Dog sled race. So that was another fun thing we did for literacy.
As far as math, we had a wonderful family night. Back on February 8th, students and parents had the opportunity to solve math problems on vertical whiteboards while grade-level teachers were available to explain those concepts and materials used in class. We had around 100 students and their family members that have attended that event. Our data from fall to winter in both our teacher survey and student survey on our Sabers indicated improvement, 5% growth from those students in the summer risk or low-risk areas. Oaklawn Elementary now has a CLC Lighted Schoolhouse Program that is after-school, provides services to lead improved academic student achievement, youth development, and greater family and community connections within our school. We've been trying for that for a number of years, so we're very excited that we got to roll that out this year.
Another new thing that we're trying is the Day of Play. So we will host our first Day of Play next Friday. It's really an afternoon, afternoon of play. The purpose of this event is to foster students' social skills like cooperation, problem-solving, and confidence. And it also provides student choice, which benefits emotional skills and mental health.
Speaking of mental health, our partnership with Collaborative Wellness has continued to provide some counseling right on-site to students one-on-one who are in that high-risk category. But now we are also rolling out for those students who are at that summer-risk category, some small group meetings that are going on to be able to address those needs. So we're really excited for that. Oaklawn has formed staff committees to work on improving areas that need more attention. Every one of our teachers and staff members serves on those committees, allowing each staff member to take a leadership role and contribute their ideas for making positive changes within our school community and our school family. We continue to trend positively in our overall engagement score. Our engagement index grew 11% between our last surveys. And finally, I always want to give that opportunity to thank our ongoing partnership with Four Imprint. The staff and school community value their time, energy, and generosity for this outstanding area of business. And so I just want to take that opportunity to thank them as well with the great things that they're doing. So thank you for giving us the time and the opportunity to share with you some great things that are happening at Oaklawn Elementary School.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Brooke, for coming. Thank you.
I would just like to add one suggestion if you do Iditarod again in the future. I know that tomorrow afternoon at Oshkosh West High School, they're going to be featuring some exemplary women from the community, but there's an exemplary woman from Waukesha, Wisconsin, who was the first woman ever to finish the Iditarod Race. Wisconsin lady, wrote several books. Her name is Mary Shields. And if you do Iditarod again, or Iditarod, or Iditarod, I'm sorry, again, she might be somebody to look into. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Okay. Thank you very much. And next, we have approval of the agenda. We do have currently three individually considered resolutions, and I've had a request to pull number three, sale of Washington Elementary School, from the consent agenda to individually considered resolutions. Okay? Any?
Send move.
Yeah.
All second.
Carlin and Wright?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Carlin.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. And is it possible that we could move them into the individual agenda items, consent agendas, just after the agenda-related public forum?
So.
Yes.
Send move.
All second.
Barb and Dewitt.
Yep. Call the rule.
One hundred seconds, please.
Yep.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Carlin.
Aye. Motion carries. What just happened?
I don't know.
The lights are really bright in here tonight. I don't know what it is. Okay. Moving on. Thank you very much. The Board President's Report. We have some retirements this evening, which is always sad, but nice for the people that are retiring. First of all, we have Mary Dietrich, Behavior Intervention Consultant. She's been at Carl Trager and Lakeside since 1995. Robin Geddes, a grade-five teacher at Oaklawn, and she's been with the district since 2004. Patricia Granzo, EBD teacher at Webster Stanley, 1998. Susan Hoffman, Social Studies teacher at Bell Phillips Middle School since 2021. Michelle Kleison, a science teacher, Oshkosh North, 1992. Carol Landgraf, Family Consumer Science teacher at Oshkosh North, 2004. Cheryl Pagel, SPD, Homebound teacher, Oshkosh North, 2006. Kim Phillips, Autism teacher at Oshkosh North, 2013. Lori Egley, Grade Three teacher, Roosevelt Elementary School, 1995. And Karen Cole, Grade Four teacher, Roosevelt Elementary School, 1992. Do any board members have anything they would like to add about our retirees? Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. First of all, I would like to wish all of these wonderful people a long, healthy, and happy retirement. I've had the good fortune during the course of my career in the district to interact with anyone who was hired before 2007. And so, and we have quite a few of those on the list. These are exemplary people who have contributed so much to the students and families in our school district, and so we want to wish them well. I just want to cite one example of the kind of quality of the people we're looking at here. I had the opportunity to hire one of these individuals many years ago, or recommend her for hiring. And in doing reference checks, the reference told me she doesn't realize how good she is. And that certainly has proven to be true. And it could be said for many of these other ones. They have just been exemplary. And once again, we're losing an excellent female science teacher role model in Michelle Kleison. And it's so important that we have diversity in our teaching ranks and that we have these examples for our young women, as well as our young men, for all our students to see that anyone can be successful in any of these careers, whether they were at some point considered non-traditional or not. So I just, again, want to reiterate that we owe these individuals a debt of gratitude and thank them for their numerous contributions to the success of students over these many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well said, Dr. Herzog. Thank you to all the retirees. And B, on my President's Report, just wanted the community to know that the school board members have been in each one of the schools or may still be getting to each one of the schools. We divide up by board member to make sure that all of our schools are visited during the year. And then we have a sheet for us to put all of our feedback. And the items that are on the sheets are things that are going well at the school, things that maybe the principal would like to change, and any wonderings they may have. Questions for the district, and then superintendent feedback. All of this are being, all of these are being compiled into one sheet, which will go to Dr. Davis, Administration, and the Board, so we can see the totality of the comments for all of the schools. This has been a great practice, and if you haven't turned it in yet, turn it in to Sheri, so we can get it finalized. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have Board Administrative Reports. I'm sorry. We'll have the superintendent's report before Board Report.
Yes, and we'll check in with Eva to check in with Sparty. So we'll kick it over to Eva.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi. So the Teachers in Sneakers charity basketball game was held at the Oshkosh Arena, where the Oshkosh School District teachers went up against the Appleton School District and we won. Mr. Griffith, a business teacher, as well as co-advisor, was named MVP. Over spring break, our community students went all over the East Coast. They stopped in Boston, Salem, New York, and Philadelphia. They got to see historic landmarks and Broadway shows. The Oshkosh North Art Department held the People's Choice Art in the Garden Art Show at the Hilton Garden in April 6th and 7th. Original artwork from over 30 Midwest artists and local Oshkosh students are fighting for awards determined by public vote. We are so proud of our Spartans. With prom coming up, the annual Prom Closet is opening again to help students who might not have the means to get a new prom dress. This gives a student a chance to go to prom no matter the cost. Sophomore Gwen Swall took third place in the nation for powerlifting in her weight class. We are so proud of Gwen, as well as the whole powerlifting team. They've done amazing things this year. The Oshkosh North Drama Department invites you to see the play, The Shining Lives, written by Melanie Marnich. The play follows Catherine Donahue, played by junior Hannah Pfizer, as she works in the 1920s at a watch factory. It shows her and her friends' lives that are affected by radium poisoning while working in a factory. Show dates are May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. We hope to see you there. In the past few years, Oshkosh North has been a part of the Fox PAC Center Stage Awards, a program that provides feedback to school musicals and gives them a chance to win awards for their dedication and hard work. This year, we had two incredible honors, we had the incredible honor of two nominations and two awards. These include Senior Delilah Larson-Petrelli nominated for Outstanding Lead Role Category as Miss Trench Bowl. Director Ms. Bridget W. Ulrich has been nominated for Influential Theater Educator. Senior Evelyn Olle won the Outstanding Achievement Award, and Senior Jared Jennings won the Outstanding Student Stage Manager Award. Spring sports have started at Oshkosh North. Boys and girls track infield advised by Coach Danza, softball led by Coach Kozlowski, sorry. Baseball headed by Coach Loper. Girls soccer led by Coach Palmquist. Boys golf advised by Coach Dorn, and boys tennis headed by Coach Sagan. Thank you for checking in, Ms. Sparty.
Thank you for sharing.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Next up, what's up with the Wildcats?
Yes. All right. There's a decent few slides, so I'll go through quick. It's been a while since we've been here. So as far as past events go, we had ACT and state testing. So on March 12th and 13th, the juniors took the ACT. Leading up to this, they had home rooms and WRs to prepare them for this. They did that last year, so I was the first group to have those home rooms. Personally, I think they were pretty beneficial. It gave you a chance to practice and get used to the test format, so that you were not as anxious for it. And then on April 2nd and 3rd, the freshmen and sophomores had their practice ACT, and then the freshmen had state Wisconsin testing. We have all-city orchestra concert back at the end of February. So students from third grade through 12th grade got to play together. Not sure who I was there. Dr. Davis, I know you were, but the grand finale, but I was not going to spoil you. Spoil for all of you was Ode to Joy, so we got to play that all together.
Very cool.
Solo ensemble happened on March 2nd, and students from all three music types participated. We have very good participation in musics at West, so at least 200 students were signed up and went to this. And band, choir, and orchestra. The Oshkosh Youth Symphony, which entails both high schools and students from Nina as well, had a Maui Strong Voice fundraiser. So Maui specifically right now in Hawaii is struggling a lot with many of the natural disasters. They're struggling financially. Some places had opened up, such as hotels, for people to stay there as their homes were destroyed. But now they are kicking those people out. So the Grines specifically have some family there, and so we were able to raise some money, help them out, pay tribute to them. So that was super special and very meaningful for all of us. The spring sports season has begun, so we have girls soccer, boys and girls track, boys golf, and boys tennis. The WASC State Conference happened and finished just this afternoon Monday. So our student council students were able to work on leadership sales, collaboration, and voting among many, many other schools within Wisconsin. As far as upcoming events, we have a blood drive on April 19th, which of course is a great opportunity for high schoolers to try it out, see how it is, figure out if they pass out afterwards or not. Hopefully not.
Do they serve cookies?
Yes.
All right.
Free food and pizza. So bit of an incentive, but it's a great opportunity to try it before you're in adulthood. We have the Oshkosh Youth Symphony Chamber Concert coming up. This is the last concert of the season. It's hosted at the Waters, and it's a night for enjoying conversation, some food, appetizers, and some music. So chamber groups, rather than having a conductor, they're smaller groups in which the students play together with no conductor. We have the West Student Council Princess Superhero Breakfast coming up on the 27th, I believe. So we did this last year as a fundraiser, and many, many of the littles from the elementary schools enjoyed this so much, so they can put on their fancy princess dresses or throw on a Wonder Woman, get up and just come enjoy some food, play some games. On the top, we have some girls who are doing face painting for all of the little kiddos. So looking forward to that. State solo ensemble is also coming up towards the end of April. Over 40 students moved on to state, meaning they earned a one-star, the highest score in a Class A solo or in an ensemble. So super proud of everyone who made it there. Prom is also coming up. Our theme is book-themed, novel-themed, so fantasy, kind of a Romanticism vibe going to it. So excited for that. And AP prep season is upon us, so too stressed to be anything else, but the month-long countdown has begun to the AP testing season in May. So yes, and that is all.
That is a lot.
Yes.
Wow. Thank you both so much. I appreciate that report. So moving on to the Superintendent's Good News Report. Again, a lot of things going on. First of all, Carl Trager Elementary, third, fourth, and fifth graders recently presented their spring concert. The show featured amazing singing, dance routines, baton twirling, gymnastics solos, and a super fun night of music. So kudos to all the Trager students who participated in that night. Oshkosh West recently had five students qualify and compete at the DECA State Competition. Students competed in personal finance, literacy, accounting applications, business law, team, school-based enterprise, and the principles of marketing. If you haven't experienced a DECA event before, it's an inspiring chance for students to polish and prepare for their futures. So great job to those students. Congratulations. Third-grade teachers at Lakeside Elementary recently noticed the need for students to become more engaged in reading a variety of genres, including getting hooked on a new series of chapter books. With this in mind, these talented educators planned a family engagement opportunity for third-grade students and their families at Lakeside Elementary. Students left with new books and hands and smiles on their faces. So thanks for the teachers that put that together. Third graders at Shapiro STEM Academy participated in a robot integration lesson in their gym class. Their gym teacher and their technology coach collaborated to create coding block exercise stations. Students worked in partnerships where one partner was the driver and the other was the exerciser. The driver drove the robot to a station, and the exerciser would then complete the exercise the number of times indicated. All students agreed it was the fastest gym class ever. So it sounds like a great opportunity for integration. Oshkosh West recently had three seniors, student athletes, sign letters of intent to compete in college athletics next school year. Ricky signed with UW Stevens Point to play football. Mason signed with UW Oshkosh to play football. And Elena signed with Ripon College to play softball. So we're excited to see where life takes these Wildcats in the future. So congratulations to all three of them. Fifth graders at Washington Elementary School welcomed Wisconsin Governor 20 Evers as part of the school's Read Across Oshkosh Celebration. The governor read a book to fifth graders and then engaged in a lively question-and-answer session where students eagerly asked about his roles, responsibilities, and insights into state government. As part of Washington's Read Across Oshkosh Initiative, visits from volunteers like Governor Evers, Representative Paul Mary, and over 35 outstanding Oshkosh community members helped students develop their literacy skills and ignite their passion for reading. We loved seeing that community connection throughout Washington, our students having the opportunity to learn and grow in engaging ways. So thanks for everybody across the community who helped on with that. And this was already mentioned, but anytime we beat Appleton, we want to say it twice. So teachers take the court. On March 16th, Oshkosh teachers went head-to-head with the Appleton teachers in the first-ever Teachers in Sneakers basketball game at the Oshkosh Arena. This friendly competition organized by the Wisconsin Herd raised funds for the educational programs in both districts. After a close first half, the Oshkosh educators pulled out a win 93 to 68. A portion of the proceeds from ticket sales, the silent auction, and the restaurant partnerships benefited our very own Oshkosh Education Foundation. So we appreciate this unique opportunity and love to see our teachers shine outside of the classroom. So thanks for everybody who contributed to that. Carl Trager Middle School Polka Dots finished their year with a full day of community performances. The Middle School Polka Ensemble comprised of seventh and eighth-grade students traveled to Evergreen Retirement Community, Miravida Living, and the Gibson Social Club to perform a variety of musical pieces and spread the joy of polka music throughout the Oshkosh community. So great job to the Polka Dots. And headed to the World Championships, excited to announce that Oshkosh Wave Robotics 28-26 clinched at the prestigious First Impact Award at the Central Illinois Regional, earning them a spot at the 2024 First World Championships in Houston, which will be later this month. Our students will be competing against 600 teams from around the globe showcasing their talents on the world stage. The Impact Award recognizes the impact the team has on its community and the world. It has, it is the most highly respected and most honored award a team can earn. So we're very excited to see where this journey takes our students. So congratulations on that great accomplishment. Our district has also been honored as one of the nation's best communities for music education. This is the first year that we have received this prestigious recognition for our outstanding commitment to music education. Oshkosh is one of only 37 communities in the state of Wisconsin to be recognized. We encourage students to get involved in music at an early age and offer an extensive music education classes, class offerings, and experiences for all of our students. This award is a testament to the dedication of our talented music educators, hard work of the students, and support of their families, and our collective commitment to the transformative power of music education. So congratulations to all of our music educators out there in that great award. On Friday, May 3rd, our community will come together to celebrate and support our career in technical education at our 2024 Education Foundation Fundraising Gala, a Kentucky Derby themed night. Last year's event was a phenomenal success for our arts education program. We hope to lift up our CTE programs in a similar fashion this year. This year's event has a lot of cool, student-focused, and student-made highlights, including a dessert bar made by our culinary students, branded souvenir cups for attendees etched by our students, and a showcase of unique student projects. One of the main highlights of the event actually starts next Monday, and that is an online auction where you can purchase a one-of-a-kind, student-made Kentucky Derby hat. The designs are really incredible. So more to come on that, but we hope that you can find all the details for that event on our website and make sure that you get your tickets today. Lastly, I wanted to share a reminder for our parents and guardians. Today, we launched our 2024 School Climate Survey. Families received a link to complete the survey via email in their ICE parent portal. This is the second year conducting this survey, which provides important feedback about student and family experiences in our schools and in our district. We appreciate the opportunity to work together with our families to make our schools even stronger for every student. The survey for parents and guardians will remain open until midnight on April 25th. And lastly, again, it's been a while since we've been together, so certainly been out and about, not only in the district, but in the community. So continue to thank everybody for welcoming me into the spaces to continue to learn more about Oshkosh and how we can support our kids moving forward. So that concludes the Superintendent's Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, District Administrator Supplemental Reports. Mrs. Conrad, the verbal report from the March 13th Board Listening Session.
Hi. Good evening. The listening session took place on March 13th at 5:00 PM. There were eight participants in the listening session. Two participants spoke on the transition of the Alps Charter School to a program at Tipler Middle School. The participant asked how Alps was not in compliance with the charter school requirements, asked for written guidance on help. Alps will function as a program, including how will the disparities/opportunity gaps that are present in Alps will be addressed. One participant spoke on how to continue to support teachers, especially in implementing the science of reading. Suggestion suggested to meet with teachers to get feedback on other structures to support teachers. Two participants spoke on the process for removing books. Two participants spoke on the process for removing books from school libraries and requested that the board not remove or ban books. One participant spoke on revising the selection of book policy to protect children from books that are not age-appropriate in content. In addition, the participant asked the district to get back to recognizing excellence. One participant spoke on reading and math achievement in the Ashgosh area school district. And one participant spoke on the RISE program at Bell Phillips. The participant asked for a deeper look into the data on suspension and discipline. The participant commented that the data is on fire. Follow-up action steps from the listening session. Dr. Coleman is following up with ALPS and Dr. Pocat on the request for additional support and guidance in transitioning ALPS from a charter to a program. Dr. Coleman is continuing the work with the literacy committee of the district, as well as administrators and teacher leaders in supporting the implementation of the science of reading, as well as the selection of a new comprehensive literacy curriculum. Reading and math achievement are the top priorities, and learning spaces do matter when it comes to our students. It is an and and not an or when we are looking at both of those. And then the process for book removal or reconsideration is in the Ashgosh area school district policy and is being followed. Discipline data was analyzed in the pupil nondiscrimination report and is being addressed tonight with action steps in the equity plan later in our workshop.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox, Menominee Elementary School update. And Mr. Kautstein.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please report. The Menominee construction project is on time, on schedule.
On budget.
On budget as well. Thank you. We just had an organized tour today. It is quite literally changing every day, and you can see it happening quite quickly. So work completed in the last 30 days. Building Section A, remember that is grades two through five, paint on first and second floors complete. Mechanical, electrical plumbing roughens for that area are completely. Final fixtures and trims are all going on. First and second floor ceiling grid is in place. Ceiling tile is in place on the perimeters. We're just going through inspection process right now before they put the final field in for the ceiling. Area A, bathroom ceramic tile, first and second floor is complete. Area B, which is cafeteria and some of the surgery and community's room, sheet rock is up and being sanded, prepped for paint. Area B gymnasium, inclusive wall panels. By and large, gymnasium is complete, awaiting gym floor installation, which is scheduled for May 1st. Masonry interior wall construction is all complete. And area C, correction, area C administration, masonry interior wall construction is done. Stud wall construction, studs are all up insulated, and they're drywalling that area right now. And then area C exterior, steel stud and wall construction is complete as well. So some pictures to support what I said. Area A, top left lockers. This shows, you can see the green color, one of our colors, second slide in the middle, top blue. These are common colors, as well as the top right, the clay color that you're going to see throughout the building. But area A is a locker, very similar to Bell Phillips, where we're going to have a pod, I guess, of lockers, four rows, for two different grade levels. Area B, top middle, is, you can see the hood for the surgery. That area is being prepped for paint and flooring as we speak. Top right, area B gymnasium, you can see the paint, the sound attenuation devices, the ceiling, the ductwork, everything is painted with gym floor coming May 1st. Area C is a bit further along, lower left, you can see the studs, insulation, the sheet rock is on most of the walls. A lot of exposed, all the walls are fully insulated at this point, roughed in. Lower middle, area D, classrooms, that's an example of the stud classroom areas in area D, which is our kindergarten first grade wing. Many of those areas are still studded. The masonry interior for that space, which is lower right, is much further than that picture. We toured it today. All the masonry walls are up. So if you can imagine, all the classrooms are structurally in place at this point. A look outside after our last snowstorm. Area A, south, that is our grades two through five, you can see the masonry work as that climbs vertically on the southern elevation for that particular part of the structure. Area B, that is the cafeteria, that's your eastern elevation with the glass from the cafeteria that we're looking at in that particular picture. Area C, upper right, that is the actual art and music area, thank you. That's the exterior, which is opposite of the administration. So you can see the masonry in that particular area. Area C east, lower left, is the kindergarten first grade wing. Excuse me, that is the administration exterior, and kindergarten is just beyond that to the left, a very small section. And if you look to the lower right, you can see a better picture of area D, which is the entrance for what will be the kindergarten first grade wing as well. So the next 30 days, we expect exterior brick facade west elevation to continue and be completed. Expect to see more masonry work occurring within that playground area, which comprises area A, C, and D, as Meyer tries to back out of that space. Area B, bathroom ceramic tile will be complete. Area B, C, and D, mechanical, electrical plumbing roughens will be complete. Administration interior walls, framing sheet rock will be complete, mudded, and they'll likely be painting at that point. Window installation will be complete in C. It's actually complete on the first floor right now, so they're working on the second floor. Area D, masonry interior walls will be complete. The masonry walls are actually completed already. They're working on the stud walls. That's how fast they are moving. And area D windows will be complete within a month. Questions on the progress of Menominee Elementary School?
Looks great.
I drove by it and it's absolutely huge. Couldn't believe how much it's coming up. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
All right. Thank you.
And next, 2024-2025 student fee schedule. Oh, sorry. Budget variance, ESER funds, Mr. Nihans.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight's budget variance report has been tracking very similar to it has the last three or four months. Not a lot of new information on this. We are still tracking right now with a budget deficit of about $750,000. It's been in that range for the last three or four months. Really nothing different within the operating funds. One thing I do want to point out to the board is on page four, the graph that shows the overall with the operating funds, the first two columns, one is a prior year's year-to-date activity, and then the next column is our current year-to-date. Just a good place to kind of highlight, one of the places that I would recommend that people look at is the bottom line of those two columns, where you're looking at the total expenditures. At this time last year, we had $106.5 million in expenses, and this year we're at $105.3 roughly. So year over year, we're spending about $1,002,000 less than we did at this time last year, which is a good thing. So and some of how this model gets built, just so the board's aware, that next column, the anticipated revenues and expenses, that's based on the prior five-year trend. So some of this is still a little bit of a work in progress, as we've been changing how we do purchasing within the district, moving that, trying to move that earlier in the year, especially the second semester, trying to move spending into the February, early March range and not as late as we used to do. The other part of the expenditure on the anticipated expenses, that's really difficult right now, is the last three years, we've had COVID money, ESER money. So trying to back out ESER money from what would actually be more of our operational expenses is somewhat of a challenge over that period of time. So we're going to have to work through that as we try to really get a better figure on what that trend number would really be. So just really wanted to kind of highlight and go over that part of it. Our food service fund and our community recreation fund are still tracking as they had. I would anticipate food service is going to be right around that break-even to potentially a little bit of a surplus this year, where the rec department is still showing a surplus of about a quarter of a million dollars at this point. Are there any questions on the reports of the finances?
Why do you think the rec department is doing so well?
They've really increased the number of programs they've done and the number of programs where they've put in. They've really done a really good job of getting a social media presence and making sure that the programs they're doing have support to begin with. It was a very good call a couple of years ago when they went into youth sports and did a rec league for youth basketball. That has gone up 20%, 30% in participation every year. And opening up a VEL is helping because we have extra gym space to be able to do that now. So as we bring the larger, newer schools online, it also gives the rec department the ability to have better opening and better space to do some more of the youth programming.
That's great. Dr. Herzak?
Thank you. I had a question under 3B, key communications. You note that capital expenses and contracted services are tracking higher than trend. Do you have any insights into what might explain that?
Yeah, the capital expenses, what happened this year, and I'm not, I don't remember how the conversation went, but IT, the tech department, bought, had to replace servers. What got budgeted was the net from E-Rate, because you never know when you go to do the project what you're going to get for E-Rate. So what ended up getting budgeted for E-Rate, or for that capital expense, was the net rather than what the total amount was. And what we booked and what you're seeing on there is the total amount. So what was budgeted was $400,000 for the server. The server has actually cost $1,002,000. And then we had just about an $800,000 revenue gain from the E-Rate comeback. So it netted out to, in that $400,000 range, but the way we have to do our books, according to GAAP, the government accounting, we actually have to separate those two, and we can't net that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Food service reimbursement has always been interesting to me. So we expect those revenues to potentially jump higher. Why is that?
So the revenue, the way food service gets reimbursed by the government to us, and all but three of our buildings participate in CEP, which is the Community Eligibility Program. So the breakfasts and the lunches are free in those buildings. So the bulk of our revenue comes in from the government, and it takes a 60- to 90-day claim process to get every month in. So you get 60 days to file your claim. So for March that just ended, we have until the end of May to get a claim in for March. And then the government typically takes up to two months to pay us for that. So you've got potentially up to a four-month lag in when you're going to start receiving revenue. Typically, we get our claims in within a 30-day period, but you're still waiting anywhere from 30 to 60 days for the government to actually process that and then get us the money.
Okay. So it's a lagging payment?
Yeah, just the way, yeah, just the way the system's set up. It's not a very efficient system.
And that's driven, that's driven off the number of students we have participating, right?
Yeah, the bulk of ours. So there's a, there's a big calculation that goes on to, with the CEP program, to get to what our reimbursement rate is. So right now, we get in the neighborhood of 66% of our meals for breakfast and lunch reimbursed, and then the rest of it, and that gets reimbursed at the regular rate for whether it's breakfast or lunch. The rest of the other 33% roughly gets calculated as if it's a lunch, a normal paid reimbursement. So for a typical lunch, the reimbursements for free would be, I believe it's in the $2.75 range for the 66%. And then for the other 33%, we would get 40 cents. So trying to keep our participation higher gets us more revenue because you get more on the 66%.
Thank you. I've always found that interesting, how the government set that up. So appreciate it.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I had a question regarding per pupil aid. We recently were at the legislative breakfast, and we were circulating our per pupil aid compared to private schools with vouchers. And their per pupil aid is higher than ours, and I realize I'm asking a question you might not be able to answer. Why are other schools, voucher schools, they have a higher per pupil rate than we do?
Why does that happen?
Yeah.
State legislation. So that's how the state reimbursement has occurred.
And what is the justification for that, do you know?
We'll have to contact our legislators for that. Yes, that would be, that would be a political question.
That just struck me.
Yes.
And it's not necessarily related to this, but looking at our per pupil aid, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's most accentuated in the high schools, you know, levels, so.
Way to be an activist.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Drew.
And now we have Mrs. Conrad Peters for the 2024-25 student fee schedule.
So on an annual basis, we review and analyze our fees that we are charging families. And we have been working on actually reducing the number of fees. If you look at our board policies, Board Policy 6152 states that the board can ask for fees for certain utilization and learning materials, et cetera. But as we've looked at this, we've determined with fees, as we've been doing this, that we definitely have opportunity gaps. And as diversity has increased in our school district, we've noted that fees have caused students perhaps to not participate. So one of our action steps is continuing to reduce the number of fees for all students. So with that, we did another audit this year, and we, you are going to notice that you have a very small fee schedule attached to this report. And for this school year, we are recommending the following, that we maintain the driver's education fee at $425. We do that as a return, a cost-neutral type program, recently passed legislation. Will help the Ashgosh area school district to actually waive driver's education fees for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch going forward. So that will also help our participation rates as well. We are proposing to eliminate the middle school athletic fee and once again, getting students to participate. We are recommending reducing the high school athletic fee to $33 per sport, and at the same time, take that and eliminate the family or individual athletic fee cap to streamline and simplify all of the payment and accounting processes. So when we went through that, if you would notice in the past, we had like either an individual or a family cap. And as we went back and looked, if we actually just did $33 per sport and do it that way, we will, one, like eliminate the pieces we've been refunding families after they had hit the cap. We also noticed that sometimes that higher amount was causing families to perhaps not participate, or students not to participate, because we were at higher for just one sport. So we are recommending to do that as well as our next step in getting to the point where we're having as little fees as possible. And then the fee schedule is attached.
Questions?
Just a statement. I think what we've done to reduce fees so that more kids can be involved in extracurriculars and different things has been a tremendous thing. The numbers right now in extracurriculars in a lot of areas are super high. Kids are involved in things that are positive, and I think the whole community in the district should be proud of the work that's been done to reduce fees so that kids have been allowed more access to more things. I'm also excited, the driver's ed fee, that that... I'm also excited, the driver's ed fee, that, that news came out, because we just paid that for my daughter, and 425 bucks to be able to drive is a lot of money. So kids or parents that don't have the means, I'm super excited that that fee can be waived. That's, that makes me happy.
So the, yes.
Makes me happy.
So the, so the key to this is, is that for families, even though we, even though we may have universal, like free lunch at schools, we, we really need you to complete that free and reduced lunch application, because that is the way to get your fees waived, specifically for, let's say, driver's education or other fees that you may have for participating. So it's really, it's really crucial that you do do that.
And I, just to add on to that a little bit, the $425 fee seems like a lot. I mean, it is a lot of money, no doubt. But if you go to a private, like Cruisin' Safety, it's way more than that. So if you can afford it, this is a better deal to go through the school district.
Anyone else?
Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I just lost this. It was on, it was the third recommendation where it notes that the fee is $33 per sport. What had it been before?
It was $40 per sport.
$40, okay. And then I have one other question.
Oops.
I'm sorry. I got it.
Got it?
So under 3B, it says the fee for middle school athletics is being eliminated. That's, that's, the action to reduce the fee for middle school sports and high school athletics is a board action. So this is really a recommendation. It's not an action, per se.
Correct, because this is going to, this is going to come back to the board
Right.
At our next meeting in resolution to accept this actual fee schedule.
Okay. So just to clarify, the decision on that has not been made. The board will make that at the next meeting.
Correct, because what you're seeing right now is the proposed or the draft.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Education Committee, Mr. Carnes.
All right. So we met on April 4th and discussed two items. We discussed Study Sync, and we had some feedback from all the middle school that were present, teachers and some literacy ISTs. So the middle school teachers were present to provide feedback on the Study Sync pilot, including both advantages and downfalls. After getting off to Iraqi rollout, teachers explained how it was taught and how they were trained. The pros and cons were collected and given to the committee for their review, with lack of time being the most often heard disadvantage. Study Sync is research-based and has proven to be a rigorous program that is challenging for students who are struggling reading, pushing them to excel. Comprehensive curriculum is needed to bridge gaps and have equity, but no one curriculum will check every box and be a catch-all for everyone. This curriculum is a scaffold, is constantly changing and updating, and the administration is listening and taking feedback. The focus for this summer's professional development will be to incorporate reading of novels into the instruction, as well as continued work on components that align with standards, rigor, and engaging curriculum. Secondly, we got updates from Sam Coleman about the Literacy Curriculum Adoptions Committee, who recently met for their fourth meeting to discuss things beyond the curriculum that will need to change moving forward. His message is if the district is going to see significant results, then significant changes will need to occur. We're going to need to raise expectations to improve outcomes. Only one resource will be chosen for piloting. Professional development focus for the next few years will be on increasing rigor and engagement, as well as strategies to support implementation of the newly adopted curricular Next meeting has not been scheduled yet, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. Thank you very much.
It's 26th, I thought. Isn't the next board meeting April 26?
I'm talking about the next Education Committee meeting. It has not been scheduled yet.
Okay. Um, can you? Next, we have the non-agenda-related public forum. If you give us just a second, please. For both this and the agenda-related public forum, please clearly state your name and full address, the topic you wish to address. And if you're acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. State clearly and concisely the matters of your concern, and limit your comments to three minutes. Mrs. Erdman.
My name is Jean Erdman, and I live at 415 South Meadow Street, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I would like to announce, and you already probably have heard it, but it doesn't hurt to hear it again, the wonderful success of the class building literacy and academic competence in kids. And I really want to commend the group Real Oshkosh for organizing this and putting it together. And if you read the Herald, you know that some of the children gained more than one grade level of reading as a result of this. This is our African-American children, and I think it is absolutely to be celebrated. And I would encourage all board members to text or call members of the group and thank them. And I would encourage you all to support the funding of this. We have something that's short-term, that works beautifully. And I would especially like to stress that it is the change in the culture that is a big part of it. We often look at the word culture as the socio-emotional part, rather than as the academic achievement part, and that, that culture of having the African-American children being, being taught and mentored by African-American adults is a key, is a key thing here. So please do reach out and thank this group. They work very hard at it, and they are to be commended, and they are to be funded. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
And you can stay right there, because you are our candidate for agenda-related public forum this evening.
I'm going to pass on that tonight. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay, we'll be moving into individually considered resolutions. The first one we have this evening is the sale of the
I'm so sorry. No, she's good.
Okay. Is the sale of Washington Elementary School.
So I'll just invite Julie Conrad and Mark Roloff is also here from the city, so I want to recognize his contribution. And if any board members have any questions for Julie or Mark.
Is it, just start talking about it?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now you're clear.
Call the roll?
No, we're not voting yet. She's, we need to do that to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so.
Sorry. Move along.
So we had discussed this at an earlier meeting, but wanted to, again, just make sure, see if there's any questions from board members. I just want to acknowledge Julie's work on this and the partnership that we have, and thank Mark for his, him and his team being able to work through what I think is beneficial for, for everybody involved, like a partnership between this Oshkosh area school district, City of Oshkosh, and Habitat for Humanity. And so Julie's here to answer any questions, and Mark is here also if needed, so.
Questions? Do you think Mark can come up to the table?
If you'd like him to, yes, yes, we'd be happy to have him.
Yes. Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I did have a question based on an article in today's Herald, and that is that these houses would be projected to be in the $250,000 to $350,000 range, and I was just wondering if that's accurate.
I think that range comes from staff's, or relative staff's review, so I'd say that's fairly accurate.
Okay.
The idea is to, to make it in that affordable range, where I believe median income in the area, up to 120%.
Thank you.
Mrs. Carolyn?
Prior to the meeting, we were talking about how excited council is for this to go through. Can you share some reasons why it's so exciting for the greater good than people that are watching?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Probably on the verge of a, of loving last night with the council. They unanimously approved this. They wanted to make sure it was off consent, similar to what President Wyman just did, so that we could discuss it. The council, number one, this is a residential area, and so restoring a residential area now that school's going to be taken away, it's a perfect addition to the neighborhood. I think the affordable housing aspect of it, as Dr. Herzog pointed out, the, the range is going to be more affordable. And then the Habitat for Humanity homes, which will be interspersed within that area, will be even more affordable. So I think the combination of affordability and residential is, are the real reasons that the council's very excited to be partnering with the school district and Habitat for Humanity.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mark.
I do have a question. I too read the Herald article this morning, and I had seen something being mentioned about the city had offered, I believe it was like $150,000 to purchase this, and, and the district ended up, I think it was like $75,000. I'm just wondering if you can explain kind of a little bit how the negotiation process worked in regards to how we came to that dollar amount? I feel like, you know, leaving a substantial dollar amount on the table could have maybe been beneficial to the district as well as, you know, some other areas.
The, when I was involved, the offer was for $75,000. And that really has to do with our partnership with Habitat for Humanity. The city has funds available for the demolition and the environmental remediation, because we suspect that based on our experience with buildings from that era, there'll be a substantial amount of asbestos that will need to be removed. We wanted to focus on our, the city's contribution, which can be partially grant-funded, that can be used to do the environmental remediation. And then Habitat for Humanity actually had a grant available that was specifically for real estate, and that was a $75,000. And I think eventually that's how we settled on the 75.
So Kelly, with that, I mean, it really was a give and take and a conversation about how can we make this happen? Is this something we really want in that neighborhood, and we want for our school district? And so knowing all the cost factors, et cetera, with the demolition, that's where we came to that agreement with.
Sure. And I just want to say, I mean, I fully support it. I just, I mean, the way that I interpreted the quote, that was, I believe, the finance guy, Mr. Lyons, is he, is he a finance person?
Oh, he's just a planner. We don't, we don't.
Oh, okay. So I just, I just took it as though it was, you know, they were coming out saying. So thank you for that.
That's quite all right. And I didn't mean to disparage my planners, otherwise I'm in trouble tomorrow.
Yes, we do like Mr. Lyons.
I just want to say, I'm thrilled living in that neighborhood. I think it's a wonderful repurposing of the Washington school property, and I'm glad that the city was able to work with the, the school district and Habitat for Humanity to come up with such a comprehensive plan that makes it good for so many.
I think it, it's a wonderful model of how Oshkosh can address issues in a collaborative way between government bodies. And I'll add to the glow that the city council had with my excitement, that we were able to meet some community needs, we're able to do it together, and we're able to, we're going to be able to hopefully see this through in a positive way. So I think this could possibly be one template, you know, that could possibly use as to how we work together and how we solve problems. So thank you. Thank you guys for your hard work. I know that stuff like this doesn't just happen. It doesn't just come together all of a sudden. It takes lots of conversations and lots of thoughtfulness, and oftentimes, that stuff doesn't get appreciated like it should. So thank you, and thank you everyone that worked on this.
And thank you for listening to the neighborhood, for having the neighborhood meeting, understanding their needs and what they would like to have. So I appreciate it very much. Call the roll?
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Doitt? Aye. Resolution carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have resolution number five, and that resolution authorizing redemption of certain general obligation promissory notes, Series 2022, dated April 20, 2022.
So, all right. Second. You get it.
Nope. Herzog and then Carnes.
Mr. Carnes, I will defer to you. I think it's more important you have that motion tonight. Thank you.
Yes, so this resolution approves the prepayment of just under $18 million. Again, as we set the tax levy in the fall, we had included this as part of the overall planning and going into phase two of how we structure our debt and pay off our debt as we've got more construction coming up. The impact of, of this prepayment is we will see one, just about $1.3 million of interest savings, as well as being able to capture for next fiscal year, next school year, we'll be able to capture an additional $3.1 million of state aid, which the additional state aid lowers our property taxes by that 3.1 million. So there's, there's a lot of benefits to taxpayers for, for doing this. Are there any questions on it?
No.
Okay.
Excuse me. This was discussed at the Facilities and Finance Committee recently, and the committee made the determination at that time to forward this to tonight's board meeting. So the board has reviewed this in committee meeting.
Thank you. Call the roll?
Carnes?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Doitt? Aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much. Approval of banking partner.
So moved.
Second.
Drew got up too quickly.
And that used to do it two in a row. So the recommendation coming to the board tonight is to switch our banking partner to Nicolay. We had an extensive process. We had eight banks submit proposals. We brought three banks in for interviews. The, the team we had for the interview process was impressed with all, all three of the banks we brought in, but we felt that Nicolay had the strongest proposal and the creates the best environment and partner for the district moving forward with our financial needs. They have a very good support system for the business office and are very forward-thinking. They, they try to help us and assist us come up with efficiencies, and also with the thought process that safety and security of all of our accounts is, is the utmost importance. So the recommendation coming to the board is to approve Nicolay as our, as our primary bank. Are there any questions?
Questions?
We discussed that thoroughly at Facilities and Finance as well.
Yes, we did.
And they had representatives there, and we went through it all, so I mean, that was.
Thank you.
Yeah, I support it.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I do have a comment.
Yep.
I, once again, just want to go on record regarding my motivation to select a bank. I initially asked the district to explore using a new bank due to the unfair treatment experienced by one of our employees. The behaviors of our former bank were egregious and should not be tolerated in our community. I look forward to working with a bank that values equity, equality, and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Call the roll?
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Doitt? Aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Wish we could move the next one to the end.
Oh, yeah.
Do that. Move it to the end. Someone needs to make a motion for that.
Yeah.
What's the motion? I'd like to make a motion to move one of the individually, I know we are out of order on doing this, individually, Consider Resolution Number Seven, Approval of Commendation for Partying Board Member Christopher Carnes to the end of the meeting.
Second.
So moved. Or, wait. I'm all confused tonight.
Wyman first?
No, Ray and Carolyn. Oh, yeah, Wyman made the motion.
Oh, my gosh.
That's why I said, oh, I said, so moved.
Carolyn seconded it?
No.
I seconded it.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I do that? Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Doitt? Aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Equity Plan. Mr. Miller.
So as we get kicked off tonight with the Equity Plan, one, I just want to thank Mr. Miller for Mr. Miller for all of his hard work on creating our initial draft of our equity plan, which is in front of you tonight. So the exercise tonight is for Mr. Miller to be able to provide an overview of the plan, certainly not to go through the details, because it is very extensive, but just to go through an overview and take any feedback that any of you have related to the, related to the equity plan. The intent then is to be able to take that feedback and, and come back at a later meeting, whether it's in a couple of weeks or depending on what the feedback is, to be able to have a formal approval. So this plan then fulfills the expectation within the strategic plan of having that equity plan. We had a placeholder essentially for it, and this is a plan that will be the initial version of that. Certainly a plan that isn't perfect, but that will continue to refine as we're moving forward, as we, as we go throughout, throughout the years. So again, just want to thank Anthony for all of his work on this. Certainly there was a review, extensive review of a lot of districts, other K-12 districts' equity plans. And this one is a combination of some of those highlights, but primarily a iteration of our pupil non-discrimination report, which he had received last month. And so there's a lot of integration into, that report only goes to the DPI, through the school board and the DPI every five years. So we wanted to carry a lot of those themes that we want to track and improve on, on an annual basis. And this plan is the vehicle to do that as we move forward. So with that, I'll kick it over to, to Anthony for an overview of the plan.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Davis. So, good evening, everybody. I'm super excited to introduce our KPI. This stands as a testament to our collective effort, and I want to be sure to extend my gratitude to our administrative team that extended their support in creating this document. Additionally, I want to thank the educators and community members for their invaluable feedback during this planning process. Again, the KPI and focus tonight is the equity plan. But before diving into the equity plan, I would like to introduce a phenomenon that you all may or may not be familiar with, and it is called the curb cut effect. So if you can imagine navigating a city in a wheelchair before the widespread adoption of curb cuts, despite the Architectural Barriers Act of 1968, which mandated accessibility for government buildings, the streets themselves were extremely difficult to navigate for a person that was wheelchair bound. Now, prior to the invention of curb cuts, it's documented that wheelchair users had to strategize routes relying on alleys, loading docks, and driveways to get to their final destination. Now, to be clear, a curb cut is a sloped or lowered section of a sidewalk or pavement at the street intersection or driveway. It's the divot that the majority of us use without thinking twice about as we transition from the street to the sidewalk or the sidewalk to the street. The first instance of a curb cut dates back to the 40s in Kalamazoo, Michigan. It was driven by the advocacy of Jack Fisher. Jack was a lawyer and World War II Army veteran who sustained an injury during his military service, which led him to live in a life with a disability. Now, his personal and professional experience inspired him to advocate for curb cuts in the city of Kalamazoo. Now, the widespread recognition and adoption of curb cuts were initiated by a student advocacy group at the University of California, Berkeley, 30 years later in the 70s. So the widespread implementation of curb cuts gave people with disabilities all across America access. Now, the purpose of a curb cut was to provide a smooth and safe transition between the elevated sidewalk and the street, making the transition more accessible to individuals with mobility challenges. But curb cuts had unintended consequences because it gave people that were not a part of the target audience access. Curb cuts provided access to parents with strollers, people with knee walkers, people with mobility scooters, delivery workers with carts, travelers with luggage, cyclists, skateboarders, people with back pain, people with crutches, and just your everyday pedestrian like myself that appreciates the convenience of a curb cut. Now, our equity plan is our attempt at providing curb cuts. We want to provide more support and targeted efforts to the students in our system that needed the most. It is important to note that the equity plan aims to offer targeted support to the students identified by Wisconsin's Department of Public Instruction as being in the lowest performance quartile within our system. And similarly to curb cuts, we anticipate that our equity focused efforts in the Oshkosh Area School District will grant students access. Now, the equity plan does align directly with our district's vision, mission, and our core values, and it was crafted under our guiding principle, students first. Our district's strategic plan encompasses four core areas, learning and academics, finance and operations, safe and healthy schools, and the equity plan falls under engagement and communication. The equity plan is designed to promote achievement and engagement for all students by helping all learners, focusing on evidence-based strategies to support those who need it the most. Our goal is to improve our outcomes across the board, elevating standards and expectations for shared accountability. This initiative seeks to rectify past injustices within our system and to prevent future harm. Ultimately, our vision is to equip every, to equip every student in the Oshkosh Area School District with the tools they need to be community, college, and career ready. Now, recognizing the role of high expectations coupled with robust support, we are committed to nurturing an environment where all students can thrive and meet these elevated standards. So, why does this matter? The equity plan is important because our district is composed of students, families, educators, and staff with diverse backgrounds, diverse heritages, diverse experiences, diverse cultures, diverse perspectives, and diverse talents. In order for us to achieve the high level of excellence that we desire, we recognize the need to address disproportionality shown by our data. Now, while we understand that unequal outcomes might stem from a wide variety of factors, our commitment to each student's success compels us to be critical of our current institutional practices. These practices have, in the past, disproportionately affected students of color, students who receive special education services, students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, and students who are linguistically diverse. With this plan, we aim to ensure that every student has the opportunity to excel based on their abilities and hard work. Our focus is on seeking equitable opportunities for students that need the support to achieve their educational goals without diminishing our expectations or academic standards. It is imperative that our system becomes a system that not only acknowledges its diversity, but we celebrate and support our diversity by creating more inclusive policies and practices, as well as spaces that are welcoming of student diversity in all of its many forms. And we believe that by embracing diversity, we will ensure that all students have access to opportunities that allow them to reach their full potential. Our equity plan communicates and reinforces our commitment to fostering a safe, inclusive, and equitable environment for all students and staff and community members. Now, while we understand that we may not have created the institutional structures that haven't reinforced inequality in our system, we acknowledge our responsibility in addressing and rectifying these issues. We understand that it is a collective effort that requires the dedication of all of our educators and all of our staff across the entire district, and our goal is to provide the highest quality of support to give our students the best possible opportunity to achieve their educational goals. The overarching goal of the equity plan is simple, is to provide access to high-quality teaching and learning for all of our students.
I agree.
For our current equity efforts, we assign ourselves a two-star rating because we have implemented some strategies, but we also have achieved a few goals. And here are a few initiatives that deserve to be celebrated in our quest to provide more equity in our system. Our district administration and school leadership teams have engaged in our integrated comprehensive system for equity framework, and our new structure and our ability to provide clarity throughout the facilitation of this equity framework gives us confidence as we move on our path forward. Brewing Futures Mobile Cafe offers students receiving special education services an incredible opportunity to develop vocational skills in real world, in a real-world setting. By bringing a mobile cafe truck into our community, we not only showcase the capabilities of our students with different abilities, but also foster deeper, deeper relationships with community partners. This initiative provides a valuable experience and broads vocational opportunities for our students. Waving universal field trip fees for students that receive free and reduced lunch has been pivotal in removing barriers to ensure students have access to enriching educational opportunities. This practice helps remove financial barriers, promoting a more cohesive and supportive school community where students can thrive. And lastly, our equity walks being led by CISA 6 is being used as a tool to better understand inclusivity within our classrooms at the building level. By observing and reflecting on various aspects of the school environment through an equity lens, we are able to identify and address disparities, ensuring that all students have access to supportive and enriching learning environments. The aim of the equity walk is to encourage a culture of continuous improvement, making schools more equitable and welcoming for every member of our community. So with the equity plan, within the equity plan, there are 13 areas that have been identified as areas of focus, five of which were based on the recommendations from the Pupil Non-Discrimination Report, and those include academic achievement and growth, advanced placement course enrollment, alternative programming enrollment, discipline data, including suspensions, and enrollment trends in our gifted and talented and choice programming. And the additional eight areas of focus are levers we believe will support our efforts in ensuring every student in our system feels safe, seen, and celebrated. Those areas include student belonging surveys, career and technical education participation, a district-wide grade seven diversity lesson, enhanced complaint process, an enhanced interview process, expansive, expansive hiring practices, and anti-harassment protocol for our administration, and job descriptions review. So on this next slide, you will see a model which previews the equity plan's format. This particular example highlights trends and patterns in our disciplinary actions. Each area of focus within the equity plan is equipped with a rationale and a clear and concise goal, specific actions to achieve improved outcomes, and the personnel responsible for each action and an expected due date. The report details 40 targeted action steps, and I am responsible for collaborating with the directors overseeing each step, offering support, monitoring, and evaluating the progress, and ultimately providing annual updates on our efforts to the board.
Any questions?
I, I do have one. Some of the emails that I received today were about suspensions. And in the past, we got quarterly suspensions, and then we didn't get reporting on suspensions. And so if you're saying annual report on suspensions, I'm wondering how we know if we're reaching our target in reducing some suspensions that may be related to racial inequalities?
So currently, within our weekly meetings, we do track our suspensions in our buildings, and we look for the racial disparities. And the equity plan, it is included that myself and Matt Kammer will be checking our suspension data on a monthly basis. So the board will have access to that information if it's requested.
So the board can get monthly gauges on where we are?
Yes.
I think that's important because it's tough annual. Some things can be annual, but something that's been pretty contentious, it's just nice to know that we're going in the right direction.
Yes. And thank you for that feedback.
Can I go?
So, I appreciate the celebrations, and I think it's important that we can all acknowledge that we have a lot of work to do in many areas, but still acknowledge that there's still been progress. I think as well as we go through this, even the most well-intentioned person can understand that there are gaps maybe in their understanding as we go through this, and one of those was brought to light tonight. Lakisha, I'll give you a shout out during the listening session, talking through process with the SROs and finding out how the questions that we asked in Facilities and Finance, and went through a lot of it, as Liz, you were there. There may have still been gaps in that thinking that we, we hadn't seen. And so as we go through this, I think there's always opportunities to improve and be able to understand that and learn from that. So from that standpoint, I say thank you. But I think this plan, and the fact that we're having this conversation, a year ago, we sat around this boardroom. We didn't have you. We didn't have your position, and our community asked for that, and we did listen. We postponed that meeting, or that item. We came back, we had a further conversation, and we worked through it. And whoever planned for the fact that we would have AP data showing no black students on the same night that we were voting on adding your position was perfectly positioned because that was alarming. And to see that we have a lot of progress in areas that we have to improve, we know that, you know, and I appreciate you being here and your role. Obviously, seeing what you've done here, this year has probably been very interesting for you to, to learn everything that you had to learn and try to make a plan. And it's hard to really make the progress we want to see in that time as you're learning, but I'll give you a shout out for that. I've collaborated with you, talked to you, and, and heard community engagement pieces well, and you've done well. So I think we're set up with this to do well, but we have a lot to do. And to the community that continues to hold us accountable, I appreciate you. And, and we, we will move forward with this, and, and I appreciate you. And Dr. Davis and your team being able to, to set this up.
Questions? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I have some observations. I'm not sure how, if these will come out as questions or wonderings. We'll go forward. When, when the school board was in a position of hiring a new superintendent in spring of 2021, in my recollection was that there were two major goals, and one was to close the achievement or the achievement.
Opportunity?
Thank you. The opportunity or the achievement gaps. And the second was to do a better job with educating all students. Under, I believe it's Wisconsin, the constitution requires that all students be, all students be provided a free and public education. And so this board has many times said all means all. And last year, when Dr. Davis brought a newly devised restructuring plan for administrative staff, we heard from the community, and that was extremely important because we know from qualitative and quantitative data of many years that without having a position like this, where we were. And so I see a number of things addressed in this report that this board has had an opportunity to see data on, at least going back to October. So for example, the underrepresentation of students of color and other student groups such as students on free and reduced lunch, students with disabilities in AP and CAP courses, and in GT programs as well. But the overrepresentation of students, certain groups of students, particularly black and brown students in terms of disciplinary data that this, this board has reviewed. We've also been told that we, we have an underrepresentation of, of students of color in our technical education classes. This also speaks to that, although I think there needs to be more data fleshed out regarding that. In 2018, the district got more serious about doing training with staff members and the community in terms of a program out of the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee known as Integrated Comprehensive System for Equity, which you've spoken to and which I know Dr. Coleman is quite familiar. What I would like to see is a, a summary of what that training is going to look like next year. We talk about it, but what is it going to look like? So I'm, I'm not looking for a lot of detail. We need to stay at the 20,000 or 30,000 foot level. So September, October, maybe we're doing module two, because I think we did module one this year, but that needs to be communicated. Maybe in November, December, we're doing module three. Maybe in February, March, we're doing module four. But that needs to be communicated. Further, there was a group of community members who had gone through that training via Zoom, the ICS training that is, and that training ended in December 2021. I was part of that group. There's audience members here tonight who were part of that training. We've heard nothing as members of that cohort group, of that ICS training, in terms of what is the district doing and where are we going? So I believe we need to communicate to that cohort group what has been done this year and what is coming next year. I know in my conversation with you earlier today, which I know in my conversation with you earlier today, which I'm grateful for, you outlined the training that's going to take place in the 2425 school year. That needs to be communicated out. So we have the small cohort group that needs to know that we haven't forgotten about them, and it's not about me, it's about the community, other community members who are part of that. And then to the larger community moving forward, and to those in that cohort group that ended in December of 21, how can they be, how can they continue to be involved? I see that training as key to underlying a number of the recommendations that you have here, and for that, I'm grateful. I do have a question on page 14 of your report on the grade seven diversity lesson. That would suggest to me that there's one lesson that's going to be provided. Is that the intent? Or is, are we talking about like a unit of study? Or is, are we talking about one hour out of one day in a seventh grader's life?
So currently, the diversity lesson exists in the capacity in which I believe it's a two-day, two-class period format. So the idea is to collaborate with the creators of the current one, to enhance that, and then cascade that throughout the entire system at some point. But for now, it's dealing with the one that already exists.
I taught middle school students for about a dozen years, and that was a long time ago, but I don't think the behavior has necessarily dramatically changed over that period of time. I wonder if a two-day lesson related to equity and inclusion is sufficient?
I have the same wondering.
Okay. But I do want to, I do want to thank you and your group for what you've produced because in my tenure on the board, this is the first time that I recall that we have been presented with nearly 40 action steps. And I believe that you have, not only do you have the support of the board, but you've demonstrated that the creation of this position and what you've been able to accomplish in roughly nine months is substantial compared to probably the previous 10 years in the district. So it's a start. I would agree to an earlier comment that this is probably not perfect, but it's a whole lot better than what we've been dealing with over a period of time. And again, we're here for the students. It's students, it's all about students first, our guiding principle, and we need to make sure that we're educating all students. We have a moral obligation, in my mind, to do that. And all means all. And so it doesn't matter what the background is, we need to do, we need to make sure that we're doing our best to help them achieve their best selves. And so I'm kind of getting a little passionate here, so I'll pull back. But I, I'm glad that we have this started, and I look for good things. I also see this meshing with the work that Dr. Coleman is undertaking, and that's reflected in Actions 22 to 27, because really, raising the achievement of all students, especially those who are underperforming, will allow them to open up doors to getting into higher level courses in high school, to pursuing different professions or different actions, whether that's college or career or community or military-ready when they graduate from high school. So I feel very strongly about this plan, and I invite the public to give us your input on this so that we get the anecdotal data, we get the qualitative data that Dr. Erdman had talked about earlier. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Carlin, don't leave yet.
Don't leave yet. A couple of years ago, I don't think it was, I know it wasn't this year, but I think it might have been last year, at the WASD State Education Convention, there was a very powerful speaker who was talking about the importance of having black people in our schools. And he was talking about how you cannot be what you cannot see. So he grew up in a school where there were no teachers that were black, and he was like, I didn't know I could be a teacher because all of my teachers were white. And he was reading all these books that were written by white people. He didn't know that black people could write books. And I guess what I'm asking is, you know, how are we integrating that idea, you cannot be into our curriculum and into our schools? Like, I know that this is a long way down the line, but ultimately, our plan, I would hope, would attract more people of color into our schools so that they have more role models to be engaged with. I loved your example about the curb cut. That was very, that was very powerful, and I think that that was a great analogy. We have a lot of work to do, not just in our schools, but in our community. And my question to that is, you know, are you working closely with Real Ashkosh and getting input from community members and all that kind of stuff? Because there are still some people out there who think we didn't need your position. I disagree with that. I think we strongly needed you, and I've been excited for this meeting for a long time because this is long overdue for our school district to have an Equity Plan.
So first off, I 100% agree with that gentleman that you mentioned as far as representation matters, which is why I do my best to get into buildings, interact with students, whether it's reading or sitting down, have lunch during my lunch period. When it comes to your second question, I have been meeting with members of Real Ashkosh essentially since I've started this position. I receive their critique about our district. There were a few community members within that organization that I've met with to talk about the Equity Plan and to receive feedback. So I do my best to connect with different, and engage with different community members across our district and sotilities. Yes.
And I so appreciate you, by the way. I'm really happy you're here. We have needed you in this position for a long time, so, and this is a fantastic start for our Equity Plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have one follow-up question. Will the Equity Plan be on the website to show when it's approved at our next meeting? Transparency and what we are doing as a district?
Yes.
I think that's important.
I have a couple of questions. First off, just thank you for putting this together. I think that this is, this is a wonderful start, as many of the other members of this board has said. I have a question specifically in regards to the academic achievement and growth listed on page 12 of what you have sent us. In the goal and the measurable outcomes here, it states that we are wanting to increase academic achievement and literacy by 10%. And I'm wondering if you can just provide a little bit more detail in regards to the, like, how, when, and what aspect of it? So looking at this, you know, I'm looking at the specific action steps, and it's talking about adopting a universal literacy curriculum, providing professional development, and then so on and so forth. And while I think that these steps are great, I guess I'm just wondering how this is going to directly impact our students and seeing success and achievement rise there. Maybe that's a silly question, maybe I'm not understanding, but I feel like there's some details that maybe just haven't been worked through yet that we don't quite know?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a really good question. So the structure of this report, again, is that Anthony oversees, is in collaboration with our directors that are working on performances across the system. So a lot of these indicators, if you will, like literacy, for example, will show up in some of our other reports and other KPIs as we're working forward, as we're moving forward. So Anthony will be working, in this case, with Dr. Coleman and some of our other directors on like the action plans, if you will, of how this is going to be implemented specifically for professional development with teachers, and then how we see that rolling out for our students as we're moving forward. So like the literacy, for example, and one of the action plans is our adoption of our new elementary school literacy curriculum. So those action plans will be established, some of them are in motion, some of them will be established. So those are things that would fall kind of underneath this report. This being a public-facing report that already has 40, you know, 40 points of emphasis, if we put every action that we were doing underneath each one of these, this report would end up being 1,000 pages long. And so, so this report is an overview of the areas of focus, and then as community members want to dig down on specific action plans, that's where Anthony is facilitating that inside the system, and, you know, and more than willing to be able to, you know, work through those and be able to develop partnerships as we'd be moving forward.
Sure. So just a follow-up to that, then. So I would like to believe that academic achievement should be our number-one priority at this point. And with that being said, looking at some of these due dates, if this is a high priority item, which I, not saying that any of the other action items are not, or focus areas are not of high priority, I'm looking at due dates of July 2025. I guess that is a little bit too far out, and I would like to see if this is our main focus or one of them.
Yeah, so I could provide a little bit of insight on that also. So as we're looking at, for example, the Universal Literacy Curriculum, K8, so we're currently in the piloting phase.
Right.
For, or will be in the piloting phase, we're in the selection phase now, but we will be transitioning into a piloting phase for our elementary literacy curriculum. Our middle school curriculum, right now, Study Sync, we're looking at, you know, piloting and the implementation of that as we're, as we're moving forward. So those processes are in place and being built out. So to, in this document, to say like formal adoption, we need to go through that piloting, our processes to go through the piloting procedures that we go through. And so we wanted to put 2025 on here because that gets us through next school year to learn what we need to learn and make sure that that's the curriculum that we'd want to go with, and then we would have that adoption. It doesn't mean that we're not doing this work on a daily basis with our teachers in the classrooms and with our students, and then providing that professional development. That'll be built as we would go. And those are the action plans that Anthony then is working with the directors on, that he would have, you know, what we would call a step diagram from current state and where we are right now. What are the monthly actions that we need to be able to take from now until July of 2025 to make that happen? So he'll have all of that behind the scenes, working with our directors, which also need to be fluid because as we learn more, you know, we need to adjust some of those plans. But we wanted to be able to have some, some due dates on here to be able to just talk about realistic expectations, especially as you would have, you know, 40 of these points, you know, to be able to work through. That's, you know, there's, there's a lot, a lot to manage. The good thing is the way that we've structured the team, again, Anthony is the point person, you know, for the, for these points, and then that's delegated down to directors and then to our staff, you know, who have some expertise in that area. So, so I would call Anthony as kind of the conductor of this work. The other thing we wanted to be really careful of in an Equity Trap, if you will, is having this report be in its own silo and not have tentacles like in all of our areas. So although this report sits on its own to be reported once a year, you'll also get updates on literacy, for example, multiple times a year, and it's its own KPI. So those, you know, the progress that you're looking for in literacy and the action steps in literacy will also be in that report, in that KPI report and another report. So it does, it is integrated into really everything that we're doing, but we felt it was important to be able to tease it out and have it in one spot to be able to look at, and then continue to have Anthony as the point person to be able to support any of the supporting details that people would want to go with, and ideally partner with us, you know, as we're moving forward on these things.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I add something real quick to that? Because we talked about that at the listening session earlier. I mean, Kelly, you had, being an education committee, right, you know that we're working on literacy already and where we are with that, but like, it looks like due date, like it's not going to be done. I think that was the confusion. It doesn't show that it's still being worked on right now, so I don't know how the wording of that can be tweaked, but it does look like...
Needs an asterisk or something.
Yeah, like, it's not, we're not waiting till then to implement. We are working hard now.
Yes.
Leading to a full-on adoption.
Sure.
But there's just some confusion with that wording, so that's what I...
Yeah, no, that's good feedback. And that's what we wanted tonight, to be able to just get all that feedback, and then we can look at, you know, modifying and get to some better clarity. So thank you.
I just have a couple of comments. We talk about a lot of numbers, we talk about a lot of percentages. Behind every one of those percentages and numbers are kids. And why we're here, or why we should all be here, what the community wants us to do, what we should all want to do, is to see more kids be successful. And the only way to do that is to break down barriers and to have real tough conversations about how those things can be, or how those barriers can be broken down, and to be transparent and have, have real measurable results, right? So while you're working through this plan, if we find a barrier, we know there's barriers, right? Like, the data is what it is, you know? So my comment is, let's just help more kids from every, every background in this school district, doesn't matter where they come from, be more successful, and break down as many barriers as possible, you know? And that's a broad-based comment, but it's a pretty broad plan, too. I mean, there's 40 steps. Every one of those steps needs to have something tangible, you know, because I think part of the disconnect, or the only way to build trust, I should say, is for us to show that we're actually doing, you know? Like, people aren't going to trust until we actually do, and we haven't actually done in some areas for a while. So I just request that we have unfiltered, truthful, what are our issues and barriers, and what can we do to break them down, conversations on a regular basis, and not hide from where we're deficient and not act like we're doing better than we actually are, and then let's lift each other up and praise one another and support one another when we do figure out a way to help a whole bunch of kids. And we need to do that as a community, and we need to continually do that as a community. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Mrs. Slajic?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank you for this report. I really appreciated that various directors are included. I know as we created the DEI position, that was a conversation we had at this table, is we wanted DEI to be a part of every administrator's work. So I really appreciated seeing that. I also want to thank you for using the data from the non-discrimination report. I think it's really important to say that, you know, we're doing these reports, that we're taking that data, and we're making change based on that. And I also want to thank you for just the vastness of the 40 steps, everything from hiring practices to the discipline data and academic growth. And kind of speaking to your point, Mr. Witt, is, one of the things that I am a firm believer of that will help student academic achievement improve is, going to Ms. Wyman's point, is the discipline, to not have students be in school suspensions or out of school suspensions. Because the achievement gaps that exist are really opportunity gaps. If a child is not in class because they're being punished for a behavior, then they are not learning academically. And I just think it's really important to point that out. Obviously, if there's real safety concerns, you know, there does need to be consequences. But I really appreciate the opportunity we'll have to see the suspension data more often. That's what this conversation kind of started there with Ms. Wyman's comments, and I look forward to seeing that because we know that that creates an opportunity gap that becomes an achievement gap. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board's been furnished with background material on each item, or is discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted on with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it'll be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Carr. Yes. Call the rule?
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
DuWitt.
Aye.
Carins.
Aye.
Slajic.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now we're moving back into individually considered resolutions, number seven. Need a motion for approval of commendation for departing board member Christopher Carnes.
So moved.
Second.
Slajic.
And Carlin, second.
We all moved and we all seconded. How about Ray?
Yes.
Well, I've got a few things for you this evening. Where do we begin?
Do I have to stand up?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Oh, okay. You were going to walk over here.
I'll stand up. You sit down.
Okay.
Resolution number seven, April 10th, 2024. Be it resolved that Mr. Christopher Carnes, for his contributions to the Oshkosh Area School District, as a member of its Board of Education. As a member of the Board of Education, Christopher Carnes has served as Education Committee for three years, Administrator Compensation Committee Member for two years, and Vice Chair for one year, Energy Committee Chair for one year, Facilities and Finance Committee Member for one year, Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee for two years, OEA Negotiations Team for two years, and OPEA Negotiations Team for one year. Christopher has made it a point to be in every building in the district to talk with principals, staff, and students. He has shown commitment to all of our students in every school. A frequent question he asks is, how will his decision affect students? Christopher is always prepared and can be counted on to be an active participant at committee and full school board meetings. Christopher is also present in the community, building a wide network of resources that will bring support to the district. He has poured his heart and soul into researching all the information prior to a board, board vote, so he feels confident that he will vote for the best decision for the district. His "all" means-all stance resonates with every comment he has made. Lastly, as a member of the Oshkosh Area School District community, Christopher has represented the citizens, parents, staff, and students of his community in a most passionately outstanding manner. Christopher is keenly aware that the only reason for the Oshkosh Area School District to exist is the education of all students in this community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is forwarded to Mr. Christopher Carnes with the appreciation, thanks, and best wishes of his colleagues on the Oshkosh Area, Area School District Board of Education, as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. Resolved this 10th day of April 2024. Beth Wyman, Oshkosh Area School District Board President. This says, "On behalf of the entire Oshkosh Area School District community, a sincere thank you is extended to Christopher Carnes in recognition of faithful service as a board member of the Board of Education 2021 to 2024." And this is a certificate of commendation presented to Christopher Carnes in recognition for your service to the children of Wisconsin Public Schools, and this is from Wasbe, Wisconsin Association of School Boards. For you. Congratulations.
Uh, yeah, can I?
You may.
Okay. That was very nice and quite uncomfortable, but thank you.
Happens.
So to be completely honest, this past week has been one of the most emotional weeks of my life. I have to say, it has been an absolute honor to serve on the Oshkosh School Board. What hurts the most is how much I absolutely love doing all of it. I love the meetings, I love the committees, I love the events, and more than anything, I love doing all of it for the kids of Oshkosh. Everything we do should be what's best for the kids. I made it my goal to be inside every school in my three years, so we are sitting around this boardroom, making decisions. We understand how it impacts our community. Each school is different and has its own challenges, and it's important that we understand that. Many times, our progress gets forgotten, because there's always more work to do, and it's easy for someone from the outside looking in not to understand the work that's being done. But we have, over the past three years, set the table of where we are going in this district. It will be hard not to be around to see the next phase of this, but I know the work we have done in only three years will leave a long legacy in this district. Being on the board is more than just something to put on your resume. There is a commitment that is required to be on the school board. You need to understand the responsibility you have and the importance to be at every board meeting, every committee meeting, as many activities and events as possible, to be present, prepared, and ready to do what needs to be done for the kids in our community. We also need to be able to learn and ask questions, and sometimes have your mind changed. I have been proud to be part of some challenging conversations in this room, and know that we can do it in a respectful, responsible manner. We've hired Dr. Davis and helped him assemble a team that will change academics in this district. Literacy is a huge priority, and as someone who has spent the last three years overseeing the Education Committee, I am devastated not to be able to continue on this journey. But I know we have great people in place who are going to get the results our kids deserve. To all the staff and the administrators, I thank you all for your hard work. Education is how we change the world. I did not realize how much fun I would have doing this, and more than anything, I will miss it. I urge all of you to do the right thing, simply because it's the right thing to do. It has been the honor of a lifetime to serve my community and to serve on this board. Thank you all.
Thank you. Very well said. Okay, request for future agenda items.
We need to do a roll.
What do we need to do? Oh, I'm sorry. I got all excited and emotional. Call the roll, please.
Carlin?
I want to say nay, but I'm going to say aye.
Duitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Slajic?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Resolutions carries.
Request for future agenda items. Announcements. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards will be holding a new board member gathering on Tuesday, April 16th, from 7:00 until 9:00 p.m. at CSU 6. And our new board member, Tim Hess, as well as our continuing board members and Dr. Davis are all invited to that event. Thank you.
What date was that again?
Tuesday, from 7:00 to 9:00 at CSU.
Okay, now we'd like to adjourn to executive session, where one will be considering the employment of Washington.
I would move to waive the reading of the executive session one last time.
Thank you. One last time.
I'll second that.
Marvelous. Call the roll, please.
Just one moment.
Sure.
It throws me out of my routine.
We've been thrown a lot tonight, so.
Okay, Duitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Slajic?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Resolutions carries.
And I make a motion to move to executive session.
Second. Carlin, Carlin.
Call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Slajic?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Resolutions carries.
And I make a motion to move to executive session.
Second. Carlin, Carlin.
Call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Slajic?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?